Questions or good ideas, we love to hear from you. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Councilmember Betrand.
Here.
Councilmember Barrow.
Here.
Mayor Harland.
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are being broadcast live tonight on Channel 8, and our technician is Alex Saidi. And we are rebroadcast, not exactly sure of the times, but usually on Wednesdays afternoon and Saturday mornings. So you can go online to Community Television and you can get a schedule for the day and look up and see if there's any of your favorite public meetings that you missed that you want to watch. Board Supervisors, Santa Cruz City Council, Watsonville Water Board, SoCal Creek Water Board on Tuesday night, 6 o'clock, right here, and you can stay home and watch it on television. And other very interesting public bodies, I think. Presentations we have now, so will our recipients please come forward?
Well, Amy is supposed to be here, too.
We did have one, and Kristen, I realized that you were retired from the board, Museum Board, so we added you at the last moment.
I didn't get the memo.
One up there, yeah.
I didn't get the memo.
Thank you very much for your service to Capitola. It's been wonderful. You've really contributed a lot. It's been very, very good that you've moved here and that you've contributed so much. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to really thank the Financial Advisory Committee and Mark for the wonderful job he's been doing. And I would encourage anybody who wants to get involved in what's happening in our country today to get involved with your local government first. And this is one of the most transparent communities regarding finance, regarding policymaking, and the general running of the city. So I would encourage you really to get involved in any way you're comfortable and feel that you can spend the time. It's incredibly rewarding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kristen Peterson served on the Museum Board. Now that she's elected to the Capitola City Council, I guess she can't continue anymore. I don't know why, but she did a great job with the Museum Board and was their treasurer, and that's a really important position. And she helped out on all of their events and was a regular volunteer, is a regular volunteer, and will continue to be a regular volunteer, I think, down there in her spare time. And has just brought so much young, wonderful, creative energy to the city and to the museum. And so I want to thank her for her service. You want to say a few words?
Sure. I will actually make a little plug for the museum here. On February 25th at 10:00 a.m., they're going to have the new volunteer orientation for the new exhibit. And although I'm not on the board anymore, I'm still very involved in the museum, and I encourage others to be involved as well. It's a wonderful group. It's a wonderful museum. We have a fantastic curator, and it's just a great experience, and I'm very lucky to have had that experience. Thank you.
We're looking for volunteers for the museum and other volunteers for things that are going on in town. And so if any of you are interested in volunteering for something or being on a board, please let us know. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
I just have a comment about Nathan. So I've served on Finance Advisory Board, commonly called the FAC with him. And there's something about when Nathan does a presentation, a report from the Finance Advisory Board to the City Council, it sounds so authoritative. It sounds like, you know, this is concrete, we put a lot of discussion into it. And if you guys vote no, forget it. So I'd like to thank you very much for your participation, and I know you're busy, very busy, so you took time out of your schedule to do this. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you. We'll go on now to the report on closed session.
One more presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District update by Alex Clifford. Thank you. I was thinking of other presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Mr. City Manager. Good to be here. Thank you for the invitation. And I'm here this evening to make my annual State of Metro presentation to you, so thank you for that opportunity. Maybe just starting off with a couple of quick refresher stats for you about metro. Our budget this year is about $46.7 million operating budget. We employ 300 people. We have 100 fixed route buses and about 41 paratransit vehicles. Our service population is the entire county, about 250,000. We provide about $5.7 million trips a year. And interestingly enough, about 46% of our annual ridership are UCSC students, so they're a very important part of our success of our system. And faculty there, too, by the way. The funding side of the business on the operations is composed of passenger fares, which is about 24%, that covers about 24% of our operating costs, which is considered very good as you look across the nation at other fare box recoveries of other properties. The existing half-cent sales tax, this is before Measure D, the one that we've had in place for many years, covers about 42% of our operating costs. State funding sources, about 14%. Federal, about 9%. And then we have this category we call capital-eligible funds, composed of some state funds and some federal funds, that if we can figure out a way to stop using them in the operating fund, we need them really over on the capital side of the business to buy buses and to maintain our infrastructure. That currently is about 8% of our operating, so it's a good chunk of money and a difficult thing to try to wean ourselves off of. And then there's sort of a miscellaneous other category, which is advertising revenues, lease revenues, that's about 1%. And then in the current budget, we still used 1% of reserves, which is hugely down from the past, and I'll explain that in a little bit. So over, well, last year when I was here, I was really preaching a lot of doom and gloom. As you recall, for those of you who were here when I presented, or maybe you followed it in the media, we were faced with a $6.3 million structural deficit. That's huge. We had become very dependent over the last decade on reserves, and reserves were once upon a time really healthy in our agency. And as a result of our dependency, we used them up, used them up until we had no more. And now we had to bridge the gap or face some pretty severe changes. And what I was telling you last year is that we were looking at service cuts in the range of 25% to 30%. That's huge. That's a monstrous potential cut. And the potential of laying off 40 bus operators. However, I will tell you, we balanced our budget this year. We went from a $49.5 million budget last year to a $46.7 million budget in FY '17, the current year. And we increased revenues, and that's how we did it. And just a little bit of detail about that. So we launched, a little over a year ago, we launched a comprehensive operational analysis, a system-wide look of our service, to try to figure out what can we do? And we had to work with the outer edges of it. We had to look at what would happen if we cut 30% of our service. And everything that we could come up with in the way of new revenues, cost savings, would bring that number down. At the end of the day, that resulted in a service reduction of 13% on weekdays and about 31% on weekends. We did that in a variety of ways. VTA, our partner on the Highway 17 commuter service, contributed a few more dollars. UCSC, which contributes dollars to our system so that every student on campus can have a pass and go anywhere on the system, they contributed additional revenues to the tune of about $600,000. Cabrillo College students got together, the Student Senate heard our plea that we needed to do something, or we were going to have to cut a lot of service that would impact the college students. The Senate said, "Let's put that on the ballot and see if the students would self-impose a $40 fee on themselves per quarter or semester." They did. They voted for it, and that yielded about $750,000 in new revenues. And we worked with them to attribute that revenue directly to the services that would have been cut and impact the college. So they were able to save a lot of service by their efforts. Our metro unions and management came up with concessions and delayed planned COLA pay increase. We offered a separation incentive, which helped us to separate out a number of operators, bus operators in particular, who were sort of on the edge of retiring, and the incentive helped them to make that decision in some cases, and that helped us to not have to lay off any individuals. And then, of course, finally, we set aside a little bit of money, a little bit of service, and said, "This service is contingent upon Measure D passing." And we were hopeful Measure D would pass and save that service. So as a result of all of those initiatives, and actually a handful of other ones, we made far fewer service reductions. And something that was near and dear to our heart, we had to lay off nobody, not a single person. So we went from 40 employees, threat of layoff, to zero. That's pretty massive, pretty astonishing. And really, we are also acknowledging and grateful to the voters of this county for Measure D, as I know you are in the city and the benefits it will provide you for local streets and roads. It'll provide a substantial amount of help to us in the coming years to keep our service sustained. Just a couple other quick nuggets. In 2016, we were awarded a state low-carbon transit operations program, what we call LC TOP grant. And that grant will buy one electric bus. It'll be one of our first electric buses in our fleet, fully electric, zero emission. It'll run as a circulator in Watsonville. And then, not too long after that, the federal government awarded us a grant, what they call a low-no grant, to buy three fully-electric, zero-emission, over-the-road coaches, which we will run on Highway 17. So that's going to be pretty cool. It's a different class of bus than we currently run over Highway 17. Not quite tech-bus-like, but an upgrade from our fixed route buses. So that's going to be exciting to procure those and get those on the property. In 2017, we need your support. I heard you talking a little bit earlier about SB 1 and AB 1. I'm here to ask you to please consider supporting that. It has benefits for your city, it has benefits for us as a transit property. As a matter of fact, we'll be reaching out to Jamie in short order to request a resolution in support of those two bills. At some point, they'll get reconciled and then hopefully pass the Assembly and the Senate, and then hopefully receive the governor's signature. I know that's a lot of hopefully's, but we think we have a better shot at it this year than we had last year. As a matter of fact, I'm very optimistic about its chances at this point, and that'll help us tremendously. Finally, your city clerk helped me out earlier by distributing my message to the State Senate. Each year, I update my message to Congress and my message to the State Senate. Both messages are very similar, but the asks are a little bit different on the federal side. I have some funding asks that are different than on the state side, obviously. But I provided you the state one. You can go to our website and find the federal one. But it gives you a little bit more background about us. It talks a little bit more about the crisis in funding transit today across the U.S. and in particular for us as a local transit property. And offers up some solutions, which include AB 1 and SB 1, on how the state can help us. Also talks about the desperate need for a capital program. Prop 1B ran itself out in 2016. That was a capital program that provided a lot of money over 10 years to our agency to buy buses. It's exhausted. We need the state to think about a new capital bond initiative to help us with buses and infrastructure in this state. That concludes my message, and I would be happy to take any questions or comments.
Mike?
Alex, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
And you stole my thunder a little. I was going to ask the council to consider the AB 1, SB 1 at a future council meeting, and it'll go on the agenda, but it is very critical, not only to our city, but to the county in general and to the metro. Has the metro engaged in any benchmark studies of other counties' transit systems to see where we stand and where we, things that we could learn from them?
Absolutely. Yes, since I've been aboard, that's kind of my thing. I'm a data-driven kind of person. And so I've been reaching out to what I call the peer properties, looking at properties both in the state of California and outside the state of California. As a matter of fact, when we went through that entire process a year and a half ago of talking about the structural deficit, the board sat through many, many two-hour sessions with me so that we could figure out how we got there, what are our options to fix it. And we included in that discussion a lot of data about peer properties and where we stood. In some areas, we were doing pretty good, like, for example, fare box recovery. In other areas, like cost or cost per mile, not so good. We have some work to do there. And we've been working aggressively for the last two years on just that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Jacques?
So that's good news on the three grants for green vehicles electrified. So a year ago, when I was asking what some of your programs were, and that was one of them, I believe. So the grant, the fund that would provide change-out, you're saying that is exhausted?
The reserve fund?
No, not the reserve, but from the state of California, I think there was.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Yes, the Prop 1B.
What, excuse me?
Prop 1B.
Okay. So how are we going to move forward on going to electric and other modes of transportation that are greener?
So that's the tricky question. So right now, out of the fleet that we have of about 98 buses, I have 60 buses that are past and way past their useful life. We're spending a lot of money keeping them on the street, and they're prone to more breakdowns as they get older, and we need to replace those. 60 buses is a huge amount of money. I don't know where I would come up with it. If I just tried to replace those with CNG buses, you know, that's something like $38 million. I have no clue where that would come from. So where we have to go with this, not given the fact that we don't have another state bond that could produce big money, and the federal government thinks that they've called it a day when they adopted the FAST Act, of course, I have opinions about that, but that's what they've done, we're going to have to figure out what else we can do to buy these buses two at a time, three at a time. And that's like what we did last year. We'll do that again this year. We'll do it again next year. We'll keep doing that, applying for these various grants, which tend to be today more focused on zero emission or electric buses. So the answer to your question, long answer to your question, is that's probably what will drive us in that direction, because we're chasing the money more than anything else. It's great to be sustainable. It's great to talk about the environmental benefits of electric buses. But right now, in our crisis situation, we're chasing the money, and it seems to be in electric buses.
Okay. And your main problem is the 60 buses. So they're costing you a lot of maintenance fees.
The antiquated fleet, absolutely. That's a cost that's going up. But maybe even more important than that, we're in the business of providing service to our customers. When they look at our schedule and they go stand at our stop, they're expecting a bus to come. When that bus broke down three blocks earlier, we didn't provide the service we promised, and we let them down.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for getting back on budget and solving your problems.
Thank you for the support, and thank you for sending Ed to our board. He's done a great job in helping us navigate this.
Thanks for the presentation, Alex.
Other comments or suggestions? Great work, great work, very complicated and very important business, but thank you very much for all, everything you're doing.
We thank you for your continued support. We'll see you again.
Thank you. Now we will have a report on the closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harland, members of the City Council. There was one item on your closed session agenda this evening that was a liability claim, the claim of Molly Kirsch. There's also item 9C on your consent calendar agenda. There was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Additional materials? Linda, do you have any?
Yes, we received a number of items which have been distributed and are available in the back for item, whoops, that was last time. Item 9D, we received an email letter from AT&amp;T regarding the proposed amendments to the Wireless Facilities Chapter. And for item 10B, we received five emails, three in support, a fourth with suggestions, and one public comment with input. In addition, staff received a phone call from Capitola resident Paige Bennett, asking the council to do all in its power to prevent cell towers from being built in residential areas.
Thank you very much. This is time for public comments, and you may come up and speak about any item that's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it, and you can speak then, even if it's not a public hearing, you're welcome to speak. So general comments, not on the agenda, please come up. You can sign in, please. If you'd like your name spelled correctly in the minutes, you don't have to give us your name, but it's nice to know who everybody is.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilpeople. This is Bob Adgren here. And I come to you tonight with a request, that being a little alteration of the rezoning, and I brought this up in October, that being including Capitol Avenue in the TRO Zone, I believe it's called, the Short-Term Vacation Rental Zone, up to Bay Avenue from, I think they propose Riverview, extending from the current Tressel Zone up to Riverview. I'd like to take it farther, because I own property on there since 1977. Every year, it gets more difficult to rent out, but you can't rent to families, it's impossible. The traffic count is close to getting close to Capitola Road. And it's just, people just don't want to live there full-time. But I think we can get short-time renters in there and bring new blood to the city, new blood to the village every day or every week. And I think it'd be a win-win situation. I can't see anything that would be negative about it. So that's my plea.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Bush. I would just like to respond to last week, the passing of the wireless ordinance.
You know, that's on the agenda tonight?
Right, but I'm not going to be here.
Okay.
So this is my only time to comment on it, because I had to wait over two hours last week to speak one minute. So I don't feel like the public is giving proper time on such an important issue. There's been a strong opposition to it from the get-go. Last year, numerous citizens of Capitola came by email, letters, in person, multiple times. Our community doesn't want the Begonia Plaza Tower nor this wireless ordinance. And watching a corporation such as Verizon threaten this board with bankruptcy because we can't fight the legal battles to, so that they can push their profit bottom line, special interests, is just wrong. Just because the law's in effect, if it's no longer serving the interests of its community, we need to change it. Just because an ordinance gets passed because we don't have the resources to fight the corporation that created it is not an acceptable excuse to approve it. If this violates the rights and the health and welfare of the citizens of Capitola, it's just wrong, whether we're facing bankruptcy or not. I propose that we make our own ordinance that allows us the opportunity to protect our own citizens. So we create a healthy, environmentally safe place so that we are not being damaged by this dangerous microwave radiation. This has been going on a long time, and this fight is far from over, and it's just wrong. And I think we need to take a stand all over the country. I mean, on the state level, that's not working either, calling Kamala Harris's, Panetta's, Dianne Feinstein office, right here in Capitola is what we're concerned about. So we should all be able to make our own decisions here. And if the Telecommunications Act of 1996 does not protect us, then we need to make our own legislation. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm not a coward, and I know what's right and wrong, and I can analyze the situation and see that it's very tragic to see this kind of piece of legislation pushed forward based on, we don't have any resources to fight, and you all, it was voted against it, and look where we are today. We take one step forward and two steps back. So this is really disturbing to see this trend. It's happening here in Capitola and nationwide. Look what's going on on the national level. Look at these recent appointees that people were strongly against, got voted in anyways. So this is a serious and dangerous trend. The evidence is out there, microwave radiation is dangerous. It's not iffy, it's not subject to interpretation. It's clearly documented since the early 1900s.
Thank you very much.
So I say we take action by creating our own legislation.
Thank you very much. Would someone else like to speak? Unfortunately, we're unable to create our own legislation, but we understand your concerns, but I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. We wish there was, but truthfully, there is nothing we can do for you.
Today I received a call.
We have wireless on the agenda pretty soon.
May I speak, please?
Do you want to speak on it, Ben? We don't want to hear it this on every subject, but we're happy to hear your comments when we get to it.
Today I'm speaking during public comments. Its item is not on the agenda. I received a call today from my former chiropractor, who had moved up to Oregon, and he is trying to stop smart meter installation that is coming to Oregon. Capitol and smart meters aren't on your agenda. Capitola, along with the city of Watsonville and the county of Santa Cruz, had adopted an ordinance to prevent the installation of the so-called smart meters that emit microwave radiation. The county health officer, former county health officer, Dr. Poki Namcom, was asked by the supervisors in 2012 to come back with a report on the health risks associated with smart meters. And just to summarize what she said, in summary, there is no scientific data determining if there is a safe radio frequency level, which is a form of pulse frequencies contained in the microwave portion of electromagnetic spectrum regarding its non-thermal effects. The question for government agencies, such as you, is that given the existence of existing and potential harm, should we err on the side of safety and take the precautionary avoidance measures? The two unique features of smart meter exposure are universal exposure and involuntary exposure due to the already ubiquitous saturation of insulation in Santa Cruz County. Government agencies for protecting public health and safety should be much more vigilant towards involuntary environmental exposure, because governmental agencies are the only defense against such involuntary exposures. Since this was authored five years ago on January 24, 2012, the ubiquitous exposure has increased. Friends in mobile home parks here have received notices of more installation of these meters. This is involuntary exposure. It's forced harm from all the wireless sources, and we need you, like you adopted the ordinance before, to actually have a recall of these smart meters, like you have recalled.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
On anything that is not on the agenda, we'd appreciate if you'd wait. We don't want to hear the same thing two or three times. That's not useful.
Hi, my name's Glenn Chase. I'm a professor of economics. Many years ago, I worked in and taught corporate economics. In the last 25 years, I've worked in environmental economics, and I'm an expert in environmental toxins. And there's a little bit of coincidence with the previous speakers. I just came here with some information today that applies. I live in the area. I live very much, I'm in Capitola all the time, but I have some information about the Verizon Corporation that I came to share with you. And it seems like you have something going on with your ordinance, but I have an appointment later, and I didn't intend to speak about your ordinance, I just want to speak about generally, about what's the status with Verizon. Anyway, I've got in my hands a document I'd like to read to you. It's a submission to the United States Securities and Exchange Commission. And what this is, it's from Verizon, and it's a disclosure. So Verizon discloses, talks to the public about many things, but when they talk to the Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, they have to be truthful, otherwise there's huge penalties and even prison. This is what it says. "We are subject to a significant amount of litigation, which could require us to pay significant damages or settlements. Our wireless business also faces personal injury and consumer-class action lawsuits relating to alleged health effects of radio frequency transmitters. We may be required to pay significant awards or settlements." So I was speaking to other jurisdictions, letting them know they've been forcing the transmitters on many jurisdictions over the time. Well, I'm not an attorney. I've spoken to a few attorneys initially, and they said that if the jurisdiction to a few attorneys initially, and they said that if the jurisdiction modifies an ordinance or allows the access to the residents beyond what they normally would, then there may be cases for lawsuits, individual and class action, against the jurisdiction itself. And of course, you'd have to, you know better than I, and you check on that. The other thing is Verizon's been threatening and suing jurisdictions that if they don't allow this, "We're going to sue you for our lost profits," et cetera, et cetera. But now, with this disclosure of this, this disclosure to the Securities and Exchange Commission, it seems so much less likely that a judge would decide with Verizon that a jurisdiction has to allow their equipment that is currently in multiple lawsuits, and they're, and I'm not going to go as far as saying they're admitting, but they're disclosing that they may be required to pay significant awards or settlements. So, this may change the nature and the orientation of the pattern of Verizon being in charge and being powerful for some time up till now. And this document is 2014, but I've only recently come across it.
Thank you. We'll leave it there, and we'll be happy to take a look at it. Anyone else like to speak? And then we'll go on to City Council and Treasurer and Staff Comments. So, we'll start with City Council. Ed, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Jacque, do you have anything?
Yeah.
First, I wanted to congratulate Vice Salon for moving up into the old gallery space. It's quadrupled or 10 times their size. It looks great. It's a nice move, and it's good to see a business succeed in Capitol. I want to thank Public Works. They're all out there in the rain and the storms, doing their public worky things every day. That's not a very succinct description of them, but we see them out there, and I thank you, Steve, and all of your people. You may notice that we have new art, thanks to the Art and Cultural Commission, and I believe it's actually elementary school art, self-portraits. Is it not, Larry?
It is middle school.
It is middle school? Okay. It's great work. Go up and check it out, each one.
Beautiful.
Their beautiful self-portraits of the students. My brilliant and harebrained scheme to combine the Begonia Festival and the Art and Wine Festival has fallen flat, because it seems that the artists cannot make it here on Labor Day, because they have a larger, more important show in Sausalito. So, rather than butt heads with fabulous Sausalito, it seems that we're going to have to find another way to celebrate the once-famous Begonia Festival after this year. I am pleased to announce that I get to do a ride-along tomorrow night. It's one of my favorite things to do as a council member, and citizens can do it as well. It is, we have by far one of the finest police departments I've ever witnessed. They are social justice incarnate. I've received an email from someone who received a DUI and was taken to the county, okay? The email was not a plea for clemency. It was not a plea to please help them and talk about terrible police. It was a compliment that in spite of making a stupid decision, the police treated them with respect and with care and with firmness. They brought about their duty, and they said, "I made a mistake, and here I was," but, you know, it was all handled perfectly. So, when you get a compliment from somebody who spent the night in county, that's a big thing. So, thank you, Police Department, and I'm looking forward to Friday night. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Kristin, do you have any?
No, nothing tonight.
I have just a couple. I attended the meeting of the Retired Public Employees Association this week, because we're working on a little networking in the county through the Seniors' Council, the Area Agency on Aging, and we're going to be having a seniors summit this spring to try to bring seniors together, to look at the needs in the community, the whole county, and try to work that into our plans for the future, general plans, transportation, all kinds of things, because that is our largest growing population in the county that's going to have the most needs in the near future. So, just doing a little networking with those folks. Interesting group of people. And the chamber lunch this week was also very interesting. It was at Barjettos, and we stood out on the patio, and if you want to see something dramatic tomorrow, go over there. Soquel Creek is rushing by. Never seen anything like it. It's very, very interesting. And Supervisor John Leopold was the guest speaker and gave us an update on what's going on in his district and the county, and of course, their issues right now are all of the road damage that they have, and the slides and the rocks, and just trying to keep everything clear for transportation needs. So, that's their big need right now. But the county's doing a lot of interesting, exciting things, and so it was good to get an update on that. Are we still looking for a landscape architect? Want to just put that out there? Preferably someone who lives in Capitol, but if they live nearby, we'd love to have them apply for the landscape architect position on the Architectural and Site Review Committee, which usually meets monthly, once a month? Twice a month? Once a month?
Depends.
And depends, and helps us review our applications to give them some advice before they are, when they go through the process, to go through the review and the planning commission and the city council review and so forth. So, landscape architect would be wonderful. So, that's all, I think, for right now. Staff comments?
I would like to echo Councilmember Termin's. Kudos to Public Works. It's been a heck of a winter so far, and it continues to be. I think tonight will be an interesting night as we watch the creek rise and the rain continue. So, good work to everybody out there and doing our best to keep us safe and dry, and just keep thinking low tides and low creek.
We have a new publicity star, and that is Matt. He got interviewed on the local TV.
Oh.
That was great.
Good to see him. I didn't catch that.
Yeah, it was pretty interesting.
Interesting. Our treasurer also has a report? Yes, Treasurers, please. Thank you.
Couple of things real quickly. First of all, I had mentioned in a previous meeting that I didn't have access to payroll data. That problem has been rectified. I have been trained on Business Analytics, which is great software, and can now play to my heart's content in that area. But secondly, I'd like to point out that at the last meeting, the library funding was discussed, and that an action was given to the Financial Advisory Council to come up with some funding options. So, we did meet last week and came up with three options that will be pursued by the financial director. First of all, it was pointed out that there is plenty of opportunity for this library to come within budget. A lot of opportunities for further cost-cutting, fundraising activities, and off-ramps if we needed to stop or delay the program. So, but nevertheless, given the fact that we would need extra reserves or extra funds to finish the library, which, oh, by the way, we don't even need to tap into those funds for another year, so we're looking a little ways out. We came up with three. One is to tap into existing reserves, because we do have a contingency fund that would more than cover what our projections are. Two would be to tap into capital improvement project funds, and there may be opportunity with Measure D to make that a very low impact to the Public Works Department. And three would be to finance it, because we're in the process of restructuring an existing loan. There might be some long-term opportunities to grab a real low interest rate. So, those are the three options. Again, the finance director is going to pursue all three of those and report out, but there's not really urgency at this point. But did want you to know that we took our action, and I mean, we're working on it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
The Friends of Soquel Cemetery are meeting here Monday, right in this room, and I forgot to announce that. Monday, 5:15, the temple has spent a lot of money cleaning it up, and they are going to be putting a new fence, new sign, stop the cars from being able to drive right through the cemetery wherever they want to drive through, and they're working with families who are saying, "My loved one's there," but they don't have any paperwork. Anyway, if you know anyone that's there, there's a lot of Capitol folks that are there, and you want to join our group to help with volunteer cleanups this year for those who don't have families to clean up their plots, and they're not endowed, which means they don't have, they didn't pay the extra money for somebody to clean it up. So, nobody's going to clean it up, except Good Samaritans to pull the weeds and so forth. So, anyway, it's an unusual project, but the people are wonderful that are working there and that are the volunteers. So, if you're interested, please call me.
Board Commission's committee appointments. We have an appointment, have an alternate to the Regional Transportation Commission. And was Ed Batdorf interested?
No, I just want to give an update on that. I was interested, but it, the Metro, I'm currently a Metro Representative to the RTC, and they at the last meeting came up with a ballot. We didn't vote, just came up with a ballot, which means that we're not going to vote on it until the 24th, and we still have two meetings. So, I was on the ballot, and I'm very optimistic I will be replaced. So, it would be my position at this point. No, I will be, will continue to serve in that capacity. So, it would be my recommendation that we appoint Kristin to be the alternate.
Can you do it?
As work.
When is it?
Alternate to the RTC.
Daytime meeting, afternoon?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, it's a daytime meeting.
Well, I'm fully confident that Jacque is not going to miss any meetings.
You're right.
So, it would be.
That's fine with me, then. Sure.
You would be the alternate.
Yeah, okay. I can do that.
That's, yeah. I'm almost 100% sure he will not miss a meeting.
Okay.
So, that'd be my recommendation, if it works for you.
Also move.
Second. Anyone? Anyone like to second?
Say second.
I said, no, it's my, I moved.
Oh, then I seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Turn one is great.
The next item is the consent calendar, and these are items that are usually minor in importance, and we group them together with one motion, but if anyone would like to pull it for separate discussion, council members can do it, and members of the public can do that. So, would any council member like to pull an item?
I'll move consent.
Second.
Would anyone from the public like to pull an item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is Item 19, General Government Public Hearings. The first one is on the consideration of an Esplanade Park Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am here tonight to represent the Art and Culture Commission. To give you a background, I'm sure everyone knows, but the Capitol Public Art Program is funded through contributions and fees from large commercial developments. Those projects can either have the opportunity to spend 2% of the valuation on art located on the site, or they contribute 1% to the Public Art Fund. And as of this time, everybody has contributed the 1%. So, we have a public art fund, and the Art and Culture Commission is responsible for proposing projects, finding projects that use these funds. Just so you know, the Commission's always out looking for opportunities. We're, you know, they're trying to find options to use, because obviously, the Art and Culture Commission wants to have public art out there. Unfortunately, what we've realized is Capitol has limited available public space. So, one of, some of the projects we have, and what we've done lately, is we've had murals, some other kind of three-dimensional things. We have the kiosk down the village, which, if you go down there, you always see people taking their picture next to it, because they want a picture of the beach and something that says Capitol. And the sculptures on 41st Avenue. Those are some examples. So, the Esplanade Park Master Plan. Esplanade Park, and I'll say this, is the primary gathering spot for the city of Capitol. Everything we do is for larger groups ends up down there. Dozens of events are held there every year, including, you know, the 30, this year will be the 33rd annual Twilight Concerts, and the movies at the beach. You know, we get between five, and I think, I'm guessing, in the neighborhood of 3,000 last year. So, it's a pretty popular space, and one of the reasons it's so popular is the Esplanade Park Bandstand. That was added in 2007. Unfortunately, the current design of the park does not incorporate that. So, one of the things we see is that, you know, it doesn't necessarily accommodate those uses. When you look down the middle row, where people generally stand to watch a concert, there is a row of trees. So, that whole area, everyone kind of stays out of that way and moves to the sides. So, what the Art and Culture Commission is proposing to do is, they would like to have the city approve creation of an Esplanade Park Master Plan, to kind of look at the whole, park as a whole, to see where things can be done. And as part of that plan, the Commission would like to basically include a number of public art elements, and some of the proposals and some of the thoughts were, these public art elements would not just be art. They'd be functional at the same time. So, there's a combination of bringing these aesthetics as well as better functionality to the park. So, the Art and Culture Commission would like approval to contract with Mr. Mike Arnon for a Park Master Plan. Mr. Arnon, he designed the bandstand, and he is intimately involved with many things in Capitol, including Esplanade Park. He has a long history of working there. He's created a high-level overview for, kind of give it an idea, and I'd like maybe have him talk about a couple of things when I'm done. But some of the public art concepts, and these aren't, this isn't the only possibilities, but a climbing sculpture, basically to have an area where kids can kind of interact with the art, you know, down in, I'll show you some examples, and a shade element. If the row of trees that kind of is in the middle of the view is moved or removed, there's still going to have to be shade down there. We understand that. And one of the big things, if you look at some of the images, redesign of the shower to make it more attractive. Right now, it's, it looks a little worse for wear right now. The anticipated cost for the master plan is about $3,250 for that. So, here's some ideas that were proposed. Where this kind of came from is at the Long Marine Center, Seymour Labs. There are two very big elephant seals, and if you go there, you will see kids climbing on these things all the time. I don't believe that was the original intent, but they became climbing sculptures, and it's a wonderful thing. They get to see this, these were cast from, you know, pieces of art from up in San Francisco, and they've become, you know, kind of, that and Frank's Blue Whale. Those are the two things that people think of when they go there. But some of the ideas that the Commission was talking about is, we definitely, they definitely would like something that brings the sea into the park, and the idea of a tail, and an idea we see out there is a fish that basically, what they call playable sculpture. And then some examples of shade structure, some tents, and lower ones, the shade structure with, you can't really see in the image, but it actually has a kelp motif in the covering, and it's down in Malibu. It's part of their Malibu Lagoon. One of the things we're looking at is a way to redesign the showers to become more aesthetic and maybe possibly more useful. It's right in the middle of the walkway now, the drains, everything gets wet around there, and it doesn't really show it in the picture, but, you know, some, you know, an idea came up, a very colorful tile mosaic, and with more of a beach theme, you know, kind of unique. People see it from the road. They know exactly what's there. And on the right side is a set of showers down in Southern California. It's a poetry wall with tile. So, it has been done. In addition to the master plan, the Art and Culture Commission would like to move forward with the climbing sculpture. They, the Commission's been looking for a suitable location for climbing sculpture for a number of years, and unfortunately, every location that has come up, there's been a problem with it, or it just wouldn't work out. And I think the original idea came up at Upper Esplanade Park. So, we came back down, it came back down. They would like to move forward with an idea of a climbing sculpture at Esplanade, the Lower Esplanade Park. You know, the plan for the insides of the location of the sculpture will definitely be worked on in coordination with Mr. Arnon's master plan, and the budget and timeline would have to be investigated a lot further. And we definitely follow all the procedures and policies for the selection, but this, pardon me, would be kind of a separate, I'm sorry, in addition, where they can move forward, in addition to the park plan. So, that's the end of my presentation. Mike, would you like to kind of give a little description? I'm going to bring up his concept. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Arnon.
Hi.
Another fun Capitol project, I hope. You can't retire. We keep finding things for you.
I heard your call for a landscape architect for the Art and Site Committee.
Yeah.
I'll look around.
Please do. Please do. We'll give you a finder's fee.
As Larry mentioned, you know, I think back when we did Capitol Avenue, you know, that street, at that time, we, our firm also did two or three different designs for Esplanade, you know, the traffic flows back and forth and closing traffic and so forth, and we also did designs for Esplanade Park. If you remember, as it is now, when you look down that corridor of, you know, the trees on either side, what used to be at the culmination of that focal what used to be at the culmination of that focal point was the dumpsters, which, oh, you know, you know, just irritated the heck out of me. So anyway, when we had the opportunity to kind of talk about the stage, which we had kind of just put there as part of the park, and it actually happened, I mean, it was a thrilling thing to have that and move the dumpsters, you know, out of the sightline. So, anyway, happy about that. When we designed the stage, however, you know, I kind of knew that it wasn't optimum the way the thing was laid out. And, and this is a great opportunity now to take a look at the whole park. I think the three art pieces that they're talking about, the showers, the climbing sculpture and the shade structure thing, you know, are, are great features, but when they talked to me about, you know, placing the climbing sculpture, it was like, I, I just think we have to look at the whole picture instead of just plopping something down there. Otherwise, you know, we're going to run into problems later on. I mean, it really has to have some thought to how that's going to work and how it's going to function with the rest of the park. So, with that in mind, you know, if you have questions, the, the things that I laid out, you know, just so you know, I kind of did a design for the shower area, but, but each of these three things would be handled by the Arts Commission and, and, you know, they would hire an artist or, or get artists to give ideas and, and select somebody, you know, that they, they want to use. But I, I kind of just threw some things down there so we could get a vision of where and how it could work possibly. The shade sculptures, those, you know, weird little things on the bottom there, the bright color things are, you know, it's a canopy thing that I actually found that is manufactured, so that's an option, that's, that's what Larry showed in that earlier photo. The bright colors, by the way, when I was, I, you know, looked at this thing from a number of different angles, literally, from standing on the stage to being under those trees, and I actually went out to the end of the wharf and looked back at the village and, you know, the whole beachfront. And the thing that you see when you're in the water or on the, on the wharf is, you know, the, the color of the Venetians. I mean, that's, when people see pictures of Capitola, it's, you know, or take pictures of it, it's the Venetians. And I thought the colors on the other side, to have that balance of the really bright colors with the shade structure, I mean, that's kind of how I saw, you know, how it should work. You know, it should be something, I think, that's bright and bold and really makes a color, you know, colorful statement on the other side, you know, for balancing the, the look of the Venetians. So, um, the upper, I did keep that one planter, at least where it says number five there, that long existing, you know, concrete planter, and it could be redone with, you know, a different tree, and I kind of suggested the, the one tree that's shown there. Or we could have the same shade start, uh, structure sculptures on the other side and have it balanced that way. So there's, there's, this was intended just to kind of get a conversation rolling and, and really just kind of talk about the concept of, of doing something in the park to really make this work. But the idea is to provide the shade, you know, on the, on the beach side, so people that are sitting on the lawn would be in shade, as opposed to how it is now where there's that tight little corridor where everybody who wants shade is kind of crammed in one little area. And obviously, it, it opens up a whole vista for the larger concerts that we're tending to have now. The, the Wednesday night concerts are getting bigger and bigger, the Art and Wine Festival concerts are, you know, the attendance are getting bigger and bigger. And, you know, I think, I think the, the, the city and I think that stage, you know, kind of warrants the need for a larger, better venue for people to enjoy the show. That's all I really had, so if anybody wants to ask questions or whatever, I'll be happy to talk about it.
Mike?
And you did mention, Larry, that the, a master plan would be paid for by the art fund, so it would not come out of the general fund. This is by no means the design, we're just looking at one concept. But if you look at the lower corner where the hash marks are, and if you'd highlight that with the cursor maybe? That, no, the, the hash mark where the sculpture's going to be.
Item two.
Item two. If you look there, we have that space available right now. And whether it's this design or something slightly different, we could go forward and have the climbing sculpture in there. And the art fees, the art fund can pay for that portion. It would, it would pay for any kind of shade structures that we commission an artist to do. It would pay for the new tile wall and showers. It's, it's a great way to parlay our art fund to do civic project, which is also a public works project at the same time. And I see our lawn is significantly bigger there than it is now. We've always wanted that, that lawn seating space. It can be artificial, it can be, as Dennis called it, the lawn museum, the only place where we have a lawn. So that's something to be decided later on. But that seating area and that flat area is always impacted. So many people use it on a daily basis in the summer and the winter for that matter. So, you know, at the end of the day, this all comes back for you to make a decision on anyway. And I would be very much in favor of it.
Yeah, the, um, the sculpture, you know, is basically taking up a, a corner of the lawn, but we added a significant amount of lawn in here. So that, we have actually more turf than we had before, even though we're taking out this area. There's a light pole there that would have to be moved, there's some utilities, things like that. There has to be a surface that, you know, is a, a fall zone, safe kind of surface, that's kind of what that shows. And, um, these, by the way, are, you know, these, I talked about the shade structures, but these are actually what I was considering. There would be some kind of a bench, you know, like a concrete bench that matches the, the planter bench that's over here. So these would tie in and also provide seating here, you know, looking out at the beach and then seating on the inside, looking into the lawn and under the shade, depending on the time of the day. But those gray rectangles are actually like bench type seating. So, obviously, there's a need for more seating as, as well as more, more lawn areas.
Are there questions or comments?
I'll wait till after the public.
Jacque? You have questions and then I'll put it to the public.
Yeah, I have a question. So why was that area set aside for the climbing structure? Or the play climbing structure?
I'm sorry, what?
The crosshatched area number two, why was that set aside? How was that chosen?
Oh, where it is?
Yeah.
I, I think, what I was trying to do was to keep, I, I, I think the climbing sculpture, the art piece, whatever it's selected, should be like the entry to the park. I mean, it should serve as like the, you know, kind of a focal point as you're coming down Esplanade this way, and as you're driving or walking down Monterey that way, you know, this is a key visual area. And it kind of serves as kind of the entry point to the park. And, and it also lines up fairly closely to the middle of the stage as you, as you draw a line out from the stage. A little hard to do with this mouse here, but if you draw a straight line out from the stage, it kind of hits that corner. So it was, to me, it was really important to have it as a, a, a key visual element, as, as kind of a, an introduction to the park.
Any other questions before we open it up? Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, this is Bob Adgren again. Uh, yeah, uh, kind of taken, you know, I live really close to that and I, I go there every day. We have some issues with the Coastal Commission and what's going on with that. We also have an issue with the cliff. That apartment, Crest Apartments may end up landing on the upper park there. So, that's something to watch out for. But, from a holistic view, I know Mike has been working on a group to open up the Rissman Mansion to an art gallery. And I think that is great. I would rather see these funds somehow diverted to the Rissman Mansion to develop that into an art gallery. I, to me, that makes a lot more sense than the Esplanade. Once this library gets underway, I can see another twenty years of the Rissman just sitting there with nothing being done to it. And, and Mike, if you've been working with the group, heck, here's your money, here's the funds you've been looking for. I, I like, I love interactive statuary on, on benches, on things. I think we should have some Aloney Indians down by the river there. But right now, I think a priority would be the Rissman Mansion. If there's funds out there, let's move it to the Rissman Mansion. You know, who knows, you know, the Coastal Commission may just, I don't know, does that, does that have to be approved by the Coastal Commission? No, okay. Climbing art is really great, all that's really great, but I'm just looking at the Rissman, and that's, that's my, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we have a couple of projects scheduled for Rissman through the Art Commission, one of them being the fountain and a couple of other elements in there, so we are looking seriously at that.
Great, great.
Mayor and council members, we've spent in the Art, Art and Cultural Commission about four years looking at a place to put a climbing sculpture in Capitola. And we've looked at every site that you can imagine. And I appreciated the comment about none of them seem to work for a variety of reasons. We searched and searched, and this was the place that came up, and there didn't seem to be any reason why it couldn't be done, which was exciting.
You know, if you have extra money, the tot lot over at Jade Street would be great too, to put another one. There's lots of kids over there.
And, and I agree with you, there are a lot of different places that we could add to, but this is something to enhance the, the area of the community, that the community uses on a pretty frequent basis. If you go down there at any time, you find the kids climbing in the trees. So, and that's, you know, that in itself shows us that there's a lot of kids down there that would appreciate and use this kind of sculpture, plus it ties to the Monterey Bay. And with the work that the Art and Cultural Commission is putting into this, it will enhance a very focal point for the entire community. So I would ask that, you know, you show your support for this kind of thing, knowing that a lot of man-hours has gone into searching and looking for different places to put it, and the thought behind it as we see young kids as being a key element to what makes our community so unique and friendly and family oriented.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Just quickly, if there's going to be more structures down there, as someone who's got a very long surfboard and is always worried about swinging and hitting and hitting people and things, I just hope that the structures are not, not too cumbersome, because my board's dinged up enough as it is, thank you.
Very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll bring it back to the council, and who would like to start out? Ed?
Yeah, I, uh, I think this, what you've, this preliminary design, I'm actually almost good with that, I'm almost ready to call it a home run, okay? I, I think it's fabulous. I think we need to showcase Esplanade Park. I think it's a perfect place for our art. Everything you said, Mike, I agree with, okay? I, I love the placement, I went down there, I've spent a couple of times down there walking around envisioning this plan. Just want to go over the details just a little bit, but, but my, my overall thing was, thank you, and it's fabulous, and I wish we could start tomorrow. But, the shower has been a, a long time problem. We've had so many ideas, we're trying to conserve water, trying to do things, but the simple idea of moving it on that wall is, is wonderful. And my only concern with that is, is we've got a problem with international people coming to Capitola, we've got a problem with young kids coming to Capitola, we've got a problem with moms that aren't paying attention to what their kids are doing in the shower, and we've got a restaurant sixteen feet away from there. So, I love that we're moving this over on this wall, tearing down the existing one. I just would like to see that wall, the wave wall, be higher. I can't tell from this, from the, from the, from the, the scale how high that wall is. It appears like it's about three feet.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of worked the opposite way, that we didn't want to have a wall that, you know, again, the police or somebody going by couldn't see the other side of, so I kept it low, but, you know, that's, that's one of the things we could work through.
Yeah, I don't know what you're, I'm, I'm recommending something with the wave that starts at about four and a half and goes to about three and a half, and it looks like the wall starts at about three and a half and goes to two and a half. So it's, I don't think it's going to create that, and I'm sure I'd like the police chief to weigh in on that, and I, I respect the concerns, but this is a wonderful opportunity to solve a problem we've had for many years with that shower being right there. So, but, but where it's located on this wall takes it right out of that walkway, it's a fabulous location for the, for the shower. So I applaud that. That, that was my only question. The other comments are, I, I think the climbing structure is in a perfect place. I saw the variety of colors, I have a concern with the color that we choose, much like I had a concern we were going to put astroturf down there, I was nodding for that. So I'm, I'm hoping we stay with black, okay, just as a color for the, for the pads. And when you were showing me the, the sculptures of the other pictures, all I could think of was that, with the, with the elephant seal was the cement right below it, and you've already incorporated that. I, what you imagine here is some rubber thing around this, so when they fall, they fall freely and that's fine, so it's, it's great. The artistic shade, I don't think it's going to be in a way your surfboards, Peter, I think it's wonderful. The removal of those trees that, on the, on the first row to widen out the lawn, that's just wonderful, and that's great, because now you can stand there, you can look straight down and see the, the Esplanade stage, which is what you want to see. The gold medallion trees, I, I do recommend that if we're going to yank out the trees in one row, we yank all of them out. We put in the gold medallions because what those are is those are climbing trees. And those climbing trees, we don't want them on there because they're going to fall on that cement below it. So what, what are the trees that I would like to see, which the gold medallions are, is a tree that has a big canopy with, with no lower branches. So, that, and if we were to put the, the gold medallions in the existing place, I looked at it, I saw four, I think five would be a better number. Just, just by the way, so when people sit on that, if we left that existing, because I don't think it's cost effective to tear that out, I think it works. If we put some kind of new tiles on the top or the Art Commission dressed it up somehow, it's a place where it would be a continuous shade, which means those people that don't want to bake in the sun, they would, they could, you know, just hang out under there. The bike rack was a great location where we have them now. The only other thing I think about is, you know, somehow, I still, we had some plan to, to, and we put some money aside to capture water from the showers to do some irrigation or capture water from the roof of the bathrooms and that planting area that you see with the, I'm going to call them red plants by the picture, some kind of water capturing device in there, I don't know, but that's something that, but, but overall, this is wonderful, it's a wonderful plan. Even as it is, and I know that the more time you spend with it, you'll fine tune it and make it better. So I'm all in on that.
Will I speak, Jacque?
You keep doing more things here in Capitola, we're going to have to call it the Mike Arnon.
It's good.
I, I might just add, and I said my piece already, you know, I'm all in favor of this, because I've seen it mature, as Nathan said, we've been working on this for a long time. The trees that we would be taking out, do not weep for these trees, they're, they're at the end of their life cycle, they're root bound, they're, you can, we're losing them gradually every couple of years. I think Mike would agree that they're, they're just not healthy. They, their toes get walked on daily and constantly, so I'll leave it to Mike to pick the trees, but I like it.
I love it, I think it's amazing. I have a bit of nostalgia around the climbing structure because I remember going to one similar when I was a kid. And I, I also agree with what Ed mentioned about the color of the tiles. I think just looking at the red ones seems a little off. I've, I've seen those red tiles in playgrounds and other places before, and they don't look quite as beautiful as I imagined that this climbing area will look. But otherwise, I think it's going to be fantastic.
Mike, are the trees like the trees on Lower Forty First Avenue? That theme tree and the, well, do we want to copy them or do we want to have something our own? A different color, maybe? They're beautiful trees, but, no, that's, that's live oak, that's not Capitola.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's a, it's a coastal tree. There's not a lot of trees that work in that direct ocean environment. And that tree happens to be a tree that, you know, has the flower display and the really dense shade. So I mean, I, I, we can keep looking, but, I mean, that was the one that I think works.
Do they come in any other colors?
Not that particular tree.
They thrive though, they, they, they're hearty.
Well, that's by two cents, otherwise it's fabulous.
Those county people.
One other comment, two trees for each one removed. So we have to find other places in Capitola.
I'll, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor? I opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you all very, very much. Good job. Next item. Approval of the Monterey Bay Community Power Joint Powers Agreement and a resolution authorizing the city of Capitola's participation in first reading of the related uncodified ordinance. And before we start, I'll just, I'll just make, I'll just put in my two cents on this. I would rather have had this come to us with some elected's input ahead of time, but to bring a big agreement like this that none of us have seen here, sign it, approve it. Doesn't feel good to me.
We've had presentations.
But I, elected's have not been in on a meeting where they've had a chance to weigh in on any of their concerns. And I understand Monterey County has some concerns and Monterey City has some concerns, maybe you can address any of those, I want to know whether they're, would be of concern to us, or that's just their specific concerns. But I think next time if we have this kind of a process, it would be better to have elected's in on the discussions at some point before.
Maybe like us being involved?
Yeah, like, like having all.
We have, we have been involved.
Right, but I mean to have something like a committee. Right, but I mean to have something like a committee of the mayors of the entities or some representatives at some point to get together and look at it, so when it's brought back, they've had a chance for some input.
Would we like to start with the staff report and then move to?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
Maybe the city manager can clarify some of that.
Yeah, I mean, I want to emphasize, this has come before your council, I think, four times, three previously over the last several years. In addition, in the fall, this council adopted a resolution of intent, which outlined the basic framework of the kind of governance model that was being proposed, and the council's intent to form. In addition, I know at least twice Ginny has presented to the mayor's select committee, which is the group of mayors regarding progress update, maybe, maybe more than twice. So, there has been a significant amount of elected involvement. At the end of the day, you know, I'm kind of skipping ahead, and I'll wheel backpedaling in a second. At the end of the day, you know, there's a lot of jurisdictions in the three county region, and they're going to have different opinions, and we structured it in such a way that, you know, those jurisdictions that were ready to move forward were going to move forward, and those jurisdictions that had concerns could definitely sit on the sidelines. So, we tried to put a process in place, we'd have on-ramps and off-ramps, so each jurisdiction could move forward as they were comfortable. So, we do have, we have a guest speaker this evening who's going to help me tonight with the presentation, Jenny Johnson. Jenny has been working on this project for several years now. I think she came before this council, I want to say, three or four years ago, and asked us to be one of the initial partners in the PDAC, which was the Technical Advisory Committee. She went out and got private sector funding to fund the technical feasibility study that the PDAC and Rich Grunow served on that committee and helped develop. She works for Bruce McPherson and has been doing just a wonderful job of shepherding this through the process for the last several years. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, and she's going to lead off the presentation.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you so much. It's really a pleasure, and I appreciate the time. It does feel like it's been a long haul for such a complicated project. That's appropriate. It's been a long process. And as Jamie stated, there's been quite a bit of engagement with both executive staff and elected officials for quite a while, including special study sessions and so forth, to which you were all invited, and many of you came. So, I'm hoping that we can have a really good presentation tonight, and you'll be pleased with the results. As you know, this is a partnership of all 21 counties and cities in the Monterey Bay region, and Santa Cruz County did raise over $400,000 in private and grant money to fund a technical study. We've been investigating community choice energy since 2013. You were one of our first partners, I'm very proud to say. And the reason, of course, is 50% of our greenhouse gas does come from the energy sector in our region, and if we can reduce that greenhouse gas very quickly by buying renewable energy at a cost parity or savings from PG&E, that would be a good thing. It also allows us to take over local control over the kind of energy we use and purchase, and again, lower our emissions dramatically. As you know, state law now requires that California get 33% of its electricity from renewables by the year 2020. Right now, we're getting 27% of our PG&E portfolio is from renewables, and by the year 2030, state law says that we have to be at 50% renewables. With community choice energy, we will be able to reach our 50% goal in the first year that this program is deployed, which we hope to deploy a year from now, or roughly a year from now. But we have a lot of startup activities that we have to do, and we have a lot more work to do besides the work that's already been done. So, I'd like to introduce a very short, four-minute video. Some of you have already seen it, some of you have not, but it does summarize the technical feasibility study that we undertook the last three and a half years, which was guided by your Project Development Advisory Committee, on which you had staff serving. That staff or that committee did 100 hours of public meetings, where members of the public, elected officials, and others came before us and listened and learned. We took community choice energy expert testimony. We guided the technical study, and it's my pleasure to introduce this short video that actually summarizes the outcomes of a technical study in a very succinct fashion. So, without further ado. Oh, I could tip click.
Yeah.
Like enter?
Just the mouse click on the, on the blue button.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Oh, the sound's not coming up.
What if we could create?
Going to go back, because the sound's important. The visuals are nice, but the sound makes it so.
... decisions about where its electricity comes from, and reduce climate warming.
Stop it and go back.
There.
How do I do that?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Let's move with this. There it goes.
I'm a technically challenged person all the way around.
It's not often that a community has a chance to join together to change the world they live in. What if we could create skilled, permanent jobs, empower our local community to make its own decisions about where its electricity comes from, and reduce climate warming greenhouse gas emissions? What if we could do it without any new taxes or new costs to local governments, and without raising rates? The moment has arrived. Monterey Bay Community Power is a regional initiative to provide electricity to businesses and residents throughout Monterey, San Bonito, and Santa Cruz Counties. Using the state-approved community choice energy model, communities can choose clean power and create jobs. Surplus revenues that would normally flow to PG&E stay local. Customers also benefit from a higher level of accountability, because Monterey Bay Community Power will be a local, public agency. It's all about choice. Current customers will be able to choose Monterey Bay Community Power or stay with PG&E to provide electricity. Power lines and delivery of electricity will continue to be handled by PG&E, ensuring the same dependability, customer service, and billing process. Monterey Bay Community Power customers will pay for their cleaner electricity through a line item on their PG&E bill. Again, rates will be equivalent to PG&Es. And through Monterey Bay Community Power, our local community will choose where its electricity comes from and how to invest revenue surpluses that currently go to PG&E shareholders.
The best decisions for our community come from our community. Monterey Bay Community Power Initiative, for the first time, gives Central Coast residents and businesses a choice in where their power comes from, building on the progress we've made in using renewable energy. This initiative will empower our community, increase transparency, and lead to real results in everyday lives.
Monterey Bay Community Power will purchase clean renewable energy. Nearly 60% of the electricity would come from renewable sources, compared to approximately 30% currently provided by PG&E.
Here at the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, we're turning waste into energy. We take methane gas as it's released from decomposing material in the landfill and convert it into energy through our generators. We are helping to meet a key climate action goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Monterey Bay Community Power will allow our region to increase its use of clean energy sources. Everyone wins, and so does our planet.
While offering rates equivalent to PG&E, Monterey Bay Community Power will keep surplus money in the community, which will help stimulate our local economy by creating numerous jobs that will produce nearly $1.4 billion in estimated total economic output. Monterey Bay Community Power will also establish many permanent operations and maintenance jobs, providing additional estimated annual economic output of $28 million. Monterey Bay Community Power is based on a proven successful model in the state of California. For example, in 2014, Sonoma County launched Sonoma Clean Power, which in just one year reduced its climate emissions by over 40% and saved its customers millions. Marin Clean Energy is offering its customers a choice of 56% to 100% renewable energy, nearly double the clean power offered by PG&E. These examples, combined with a technical study, point to a very bright future for Monterey Bay Clean Power. Monterey Bay Community Power offers an opportunity to empower residents and businesses to keep money local and make decisions that deliver economic vitality and cleaner energy for our region and our future. Our moment has arrived.
Unfortunately, I'm having technical difficulties here now. Try again. There we go. All right. So, that, the video, I think, presented a lot of the points that are in my presentation here, so I will go relatively quickly through it. One of the things that was called out in the video was that the CCAs, Community Choice Aggregation, that's the technical term in California law for these things, really what it does is it sets up a structure where we locally form an entity that has local electeds, local control, to procure and produce power here in our region, and then we use the current transmission system, the current billing system with PG&E, and then the customers, for them, it's a relatively opaque process. They don't see a difference. There's just a simple, different line item on the bill, and they have more choices than they would have today. The video talked a little bit about their Technical Advisory Committee. Want to really thank Rich for his participation in that, numerous public meetings. Ginny was really instrumental in getting private funding in to fund the technical study, which really, at the end of the day, showed that there were a lot of different options that could be viable for a JPA to provide power here in the Monterey Bay region, whether we did it as a county alone, or whether, as you see this evening, a three-county model, which is even better, was able to be developed. So, the technical analysis really showed a wide range of opportunities for us to move forward. For example, one of the things the technical study projected was a 60% renewable rate in our year-one baseline, 70% greenhouse gas-free power. In addition, they were able to show that we would have rate parity with PG&E, and in addition, generating an annual surplus in the range of $8 to $9 million a year, which could be reinvested back into the community, either energy generation, energy efficiency, or other kinds of projects and programs. So, the guiding principles behind the JPA that you have in front of you this evening really is that the rates are the same or less than we currently have with PG&E, and we offer more choices for customers and residents. In addition, that we would have a rapid investment in local renewable energy while ensuring fiscal stability for the JPA and carbon reduction. We would have controls, safeguards about long-term, around long-term power purchase contracts. We want to balance sort of your long-term price stability with be able to respond to changes in the market, and that the entity is stable financially and able to withstand potential shocks down the road, and so it has enough of a reserve to be able to do that. The result, the example that was mentioned in the video, we'll point to a little bit. There's a couple. There's, I think, three active JPAs now in, well, there's three in our region. Sonoma, Napa, and then over in Silicon Valley, they've got their JPA up and running.
There's actually five.
Five in Lancaster, and...
Lancaster, so there's five that have launched and are providing energy, but only two have been around for a long time. That's Sonoma and Marin.
And so, one of the key things about Sonoma and Marin that we can really learn from them is that they have been able to offer rate parity and greener options than PG&E. They were able to pay off their initial startup costs relatively quickly, within just a couple of years, and in some cases, they offer sort of rates that may be higher than PG&E for people that want to go entirely renewable with their power, if people choose to pay more. So, this is now the nitty-gritty of the JPA, and this was the result of long discussions with numerous representatives from around the three-county region. And this, what I'm here to tell you is that the policy board and the operations board concept that was presented to you last fall is what has carried forward. Basically, to remind everyone, what we're talking about is a 10 or 11-member policy board, and then a 10 or 11-member operations board. And the policy board would be comprised of elected representatives, and the operations board would be comprised of management staff. And really, the policy board's job is to set the policy, the budget, and the rates for the JPA. The operations board deals more with the operations, working with the CEO to procure power, those kinds of things. The way the division of member seats would work is that, again, consistent with the resolution we previously adopted, jurisdictions with 50,000-plus population would have a permanent seat on the board. So, in our county, that would be Santa Cruz, Watsonville, and the county. And then jurisdictions, smaller jurisdictions, would rotate seats on a geographic basis. So, for us, what that means is that Capitola and Scotts Valley would basically swap back and forth our position on that board. And I'll let you know that the City Selection Committee is ultimately responsible for appointing the Scotts Valley Capitola representative, but at our last meeting, we flipped a coin, and Capitola won, and so we will have the first term on the JPA board. So, that is included as one of your actions for this evening, will be to appoint or nominate, frankly, a policy board rep, who would then be affirmed by the City Selection Committee. The initial startup funding needs to be discussed. The estimated need is between $2 and $3 million, and this is really to get the organization up and running before it starts to bring in revenue, really to get the staff, get the agency in place. And the county issued an RFP to get proposals for startup funding. There are three proposals received, and our finance director's been reviewing them along with a team of other representatives to come up with the best financing plan. That financing would be guaranteed by each one of the members, and the ultimate sort of negotiation was that the credit guarantee would be shared based on a per-seat basis. So, for example, if it was $3 million, there's 10 board seats, each seats a $300,000 credit guarantee. Since we share with Scotts Valley, Capitola's portion of the credit guarantee would be in the range of $150,000. How that works exactly needs to be worked out. At the end of the day, the lending institutions very probably will want to work with just a few of the larger players, and we probably have a side agreement with maybe the County of Santa Cruz, but that's basically, that sort of range would be Capitola's portion of the credit guarantee. In the example of Marin Clean Power, that credit guarantee was paid off, I want to say, within the first 24 months, 36 months, somewhere in that, two years. So, it was immediately paid back, and it wasn't an issue. So, this is really just the startup funding before sort of the first bills go out. So, this JPA has already been passed by Scotts Valley, Hollister, and San Bonito County, and is there anybody else?
We have the fourth.
We'd be the fourth. So, if we pass it here, there'd be the fourth. The biggest question mark on this list is Monterey County. Monterey County has been interested in participating. They've had, at times, they've asked for more representation on the board. The other board members, the other member entities felt like that wasn't in our best interest, and we've extended the olive branch to them. We also negotiated with them a little bit about the credit guarantee. They originally were talking about giving up the credit guarantee by population, and they felt it should be done on a per-seat basis, so that was a concession based on one of the things Monterey County wanted to do. But they're having a little bit of an issue of whether they're going to join or not. Regardless, we have a viable JPA with or without Monterey County. I fully anticipate all of the entities within Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz County to join, the City of Santa Cruz, Watsonville, and many of the other jurisdictions as well. So, that's where we stand today in terms of adoption of the JPA. So, the recommended actions for you tonight are several. The first is the resolution establishing the authority, basically making us a founding member adopting the JPA. The second will be introducing, holding the first reading for the ordinance, authorizing the implementation of the community choice energy program here in Capitola, directing staff to continue to work on the credit guarantee with the county and the other members. And then the last would be to nominate a primary and an alternate to the policy board for the City Selection Committee to ratify in, at their April meeting. So, with that, I'm available for questions.
Kristen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, when you say that Scotts Valley and Capitola switch out, how often is that? Every year or every?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Two-year terms on the board. Although, although I do believe that we're staggering so that the whole board doesn't turn over after two years.
That would be the idea.
That would be the idea. So, I can't remember if it was two or four, normally two-year terms. The first one might be three. I don't...
No, it's two years.
Two years, okay.
What happened, we were going back and forth. We've had a number of executive-level talk meetings for the last seven months, and we were going back and forth, but ultimately, the group, you know, it's like a lot of cooks in the kitchen, it came on two years. With the option of having additional terms, what we're really running here is a utility in partnership with PG&E, so institutional knowledge does become, and technical knowledge does become pretty important. And as all of us start learning more and more, getting into operating, we'll get that very quickly of how much we need to know technically to continue. So, once Capitola has that seat, you may want to keep it for a while, and Scotts Valley may want you to keep it for a while. Although, they did point out to me during their hearing that it was the job of the mayor to always win a flip of the coin.
Oh, especially in their own city, too.
Right. Have questions?
I have no questions. Peter?
Peter?
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm not up to speed on this as much as I probably should be, but you mentioned the 150K credit guarantee. That gets paid back, or you get paid off? That gets paid back, or you get paid off, which would...
So, to be clear, we wouldn't be putting any capital in. The capital would be coming from a third party, but to, so basically, lending institution is going to loan this JPA $3 million bucks, let's say, to start. They need some sort of backup on that loan, and so each one of the member agencies is guaranteeing sort of their prorated portion of the loan. So, the only way that comes into play is if we start to ramp up and then fall flat and ultimately don't form the JPA. That's the risk.
So, other than that, that's the only risk for the Treasury?
Yes. Because once the JPA is established, it's a separate government entity at that point, and it's run just like any other JPA that we're a part of, and we're not on the hook for their liabilities.
Another question. PG&E doesn't push back on this? I would think that they would somehow not like this.
PG&E was relatively unenthusiastic when these first rolled out, and I believe that there was a proposition on your ballot in 2014?
2010.
2010. And they spent $65 million trying to get it passed, which would have required a two-thirds vote, I think, of the people in a jurisdiction to do this, and it failed. And in response, the legislature passed a law and told them that they could not lobby against these things anymore.
So, they're a willing partner at this point, as opposed to a reluctant partner?
Reluctant. I think reluctant partner is the best way to characterize it. They've been told by law that they must be partners.
And we're protected from them raising rates on, say, facility maintenance to compensate for their losses?
May I fill that one? So, they are paid for all their delivery, all their customer service, all their billing. In fact, Monterey Bay Community Power doesn't issue bills. It actually works with PG&E through contract. They still issue the same bill with an extra line on their bill for us. And they get paid, and that's actually where they make the most money now, is through delivery and not generation and procurement. So, the procurement and generation piece is what we're sort of pulling away from them, and they're delivering their electricity. They still provide gas service and so forth. So, not only, many to by law, but they actually make most of their profits in the area of distribution, and they will be making that money, and the PUC regulates them. And yes, we have to continue to watch that to make sure that they, they don't allow them to raise the rates, or raise that distribution cost, so that it becomes unaffordable for our ratepayers, which is something we'd probably do anyway if we continue with PG&E. We'd want to make sure that we weren't overcharged for that.
One last point along that I want to mention is that there's power in numbers, and not being the first one out of the gate in this case has advantages. And I think there already is talk or consortium formed that will advocate at the CPUC on behalf of the CCA's with the other established CCA's. So, you know, if we were the only one in the state, you do worry about the fact that the CPUC on a given Tuesday could do something to really make these things, crush these things. Given now, I mean, Silicon Valley has how many million ratepayers in it? You know, we have a significant chunk of California moving into these, and we're going to have a significant legislative pull, I think, within the state.
Has there been a similar thing going on with Southern California Edison?
Yes.
And that's been successful as well?
They haven't formed anything down there yet. They haven't been successful. All the successful CCEs that have formed, except for the City of Lancaster, which formed its own just by itself, have been in Northern California. This would be the largest geographic CCE, JPA in the state, ours. It's the first multi-county one that would be formed in the state. Most of these have been just individual counties. There have been five formed. There's about a sixth about to go online. We would be the seventh, more than likely. And PG&E has already done a strategic plan where they understand that about 40% of their territory will be under CCE partnership within the next 10 years, because it's starting to make really a lot of sense for local governments to aggregate their purchasing power. I'm really pleased to announce that San Benito County, in both its cities, even though only one has passed it, and the county's passed it, San Juan Batista intends to, they've agendized, all of our cities within our county have expressed their great interest in our county as well. And by the 28th of this month, I anticipate that all of our cities and our county would have also passed this. So, we have a two-county, all-cities partnership. The county Monterey has expressed jeopardiation, mostly because they want more votes at the table, and our partnership has declined that opportunity on multiple occasions for a number of reasons. I'm happy to answer questions about that if you're interested. The concerns that a few of the electeds and staff members have brought up in our county, Madam Mayor, have been able to be addressed, and so I anticipate that their enthusiasm is great, and they're in the tent, and they're ready to go, and I'm hoping that your city will as well. I'm also happy to announce that Sonoma Clean Power, which was 9% below PG&E rates with an 80% greenhouse gas-free portfolio, just announced a 10% reduction rate. $50 million of surplus in the bank after two and a half years of operations, and they're debt-free, has compelled them to want to maybe invest in their own ratepayers, and I think that's a really great decision. And to date, we just got a really great number, $1 billion of renewable investments have been made by Community Choice Energy Agencies in the state for the last several years. So, that's exciting, and those are all within our state. So, I'm excited about this, and I'm also happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Jamie, what's the City of Monterey's concerns? Do you know? They had a meeting, and they postponed their decision, I think.
You know, I'm not briefed on what the City of Monterey, Monterey has been at the table and has been previously enthusiastic. I don't know what their concerns, you were at that hearing, though.
Yes, I've been, and they have another continued meeting next Tuesday, and I was on the phone for a long time today with Supervisor Salinas, Supervisor Adams, and so forth and so on, and Supervisor Parker and others. So, in a 3-2 vote about 10 days ago, they said, would you please go back, staff, and ask the regional partnership again for that weighted voting?
What about the City of Monterey, though?
City of Monterey, they said Monterey held their hearing, and I was there, and they continued the item to the March 7th because they wanted more community group outreach. They have a lot of neighborhood advocacy groups. You might know that about City of Monterey. It's very well-known for that, and they want those neighborhood advocacy groups to be more informed about it, as well as the chambers and others, and we were happy to do that. The Monterey Bay Aquarium was there and others to support the project. So, we're going to be going back and doing a little bit more community outreach so that those council members feel that their community's been informed better.
Well, yeah, I wasn't trying to be critical by beginning remarks. I just, I was just concerned that the county and a large city are, you know, are having problems with this. Maybe there should have been a little more input from some of the electeds. Maybe that wouldn't have helped at all, maybe that's not the case, so.
Yeah, I think we've had a lot of engagement with the electeds. I mean, I personally have done most of the...
But there've been presentations where, you know, has there been dialogue where people have actually sat around and said, this is my city's concerns, where mayors have talked to mayors and said, what's your concern? What's your question? You know, that kind of a thing on our level. You know, I haven't seen, you know, a presentation, Mayor's Select Committee, well, that's just a three-minute presentation. You know, that's not dialogue. That's not a chance for us to really talk about what does this mean for us and so forth. So, that's, I was just trying to bring it down to the level of having electeds have a chance to weigh in if they wanted to about this for their community. I just hadn't seen too much of that, but if you think we've had that opportunity and we missed it, then that's, that's fine.
Well, I suppose there could have been more of a formal AMBA kind of meeting, but, and there hasn't been. There's been more informal meetings.
It's been staff, you know, it's been staff meetings with presentations here, and I, you know, and that's been helpful, and that's been great. But I just thought, well, if there's, you know, a problem with those two jurisdictions, maybe there's something else that we could have done, you know, here, but, you know, it's probably been a good process.
You know, there's always things you can improve about the process, so I would acknowledge that. But I would say with the City of Monterey, and I was there for that presentation, and I helped answer their questions, I see support on that council. They, and I don't know them as well as any of some of you, so I wouldn't want to opine what was in their heads. But they wanted more community outreach, and they wanted to continue it so that could happen, and they indicated their support, and I anticipate they will support. They are not supportive of additional voting for the county of Monterey, and that's county of Monterey's issue, is they just want more voting on the board. At the end of the day, I knew when we got to this point of this project, that we would need to know whether we could go by ourselves, because remember, we started this dialogue a long time ago. I think my first meeting was with Councilwoman Termini and Jamie and a couple of other folks. And, you know, really, could our county do it by ourselves with our four cities, or do we need the other partners in terms of load and so forth to do this? So, we did our regional technical study for the entire region, all 21. We also did it for each individual county, because I wanted to be able to stand, and we peer-reviewed it, independently peer-reviewed the data. So, I wanted to stand here with you and say, the data's good. We can, we can do this, we can generate these surplus revenues, we can pay off this debt, and we can do it just with our county. But the good news is, we have another county that's going to come with us, and their cities. And we have enough small cities within the city or the county of Monterey, even without County of Monterey, and even without City of Salinas, which is large, that we have 50% of the customers and the energy usage load in this region of partners that are ready to go with us, and they're happy in the tent, and they're enthusiastic. And that's good enough, and not just for government work. So, there you go. I'm really excited about this. And, you know, I'm also concerned, and I have a sense of urgency, you've heard me say this before, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, that through the regulatory process, our investment utilities as a group will figure out a way to chip away at the business case to do a Community Choice Energy Agency. And at some point, it's not going to make economic sense. It'll always make environmental sense, but if you can't make the economic case, your finance director's going to skin me alive, and so he should, you know? All of them should. They want, they want to see conservative economics and conservative management, and they want to see a self-supporting agency, and I agree. So, this is our moment. The marketplace has never been better. We don't know what the DC, Washington DC politics are going to do in a year from now in the marketplace. We have a 50% of the ratepayers and the load in our region in the tent, ready to go, enthusiastic. And a year from now, we can launch with 60% renewable power on rate parity or less. We can build organizational capacity. A year after that, we will be debt-free. We would have made our 20, 30, 50% or more goal for renewables, and we would start investing in local projects. And just as those policies in DC might be affecting the marketplace, we will be much more self-sufficient and better. So, I'm excited about that prospect. I'm not sure we get this moment again for a long time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Jacque?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Jenny, for pushing this project and having the support of Bruce, I think has been very instrumental, and I know you've been working on it for a long time. So, I was ready to vote yes, no problem, and then I heard about the vote at Monterey Supervisors Chamber. So, I listened to the presentation and heard some of your arguments. So, yes, in terms of what the mayor said, we were not, at least I wasn't, part of the discussion about, you know, how you were going to do the governance. But after I listened to you, I could see the nuances of the discussion and how you were coming up. I think Alejo's position was that, I think there's like 400,000-plus people in Monterey, and us, San Benito, is like 200,000. So, 200,000-plus, I think that's the genesis of his position, if I'm correct. So, that got me thinking. So, you know, horse is out of the gate in one sense, but I also went to the presentations on the study to see if this is a feasible argument, and I didn't realize at the time that you had parsed it out to the various counties, and I learned that from your presentation before Monterey Supervisors. So, my question really has to focus on the rates we're eventually going to get, okay? So, I think you can see the direction I'm going. So, if we lose 400,000 people plus, and the total in this area is like 650, maybe 7 at the most, I don't know, and I don't know that you could predict, that our rate structure is going to be good, as good, right? Because we bargain for something based on how much we can demand, and that's the negotiation. So, if we cut down, let's say, to a third of what we could have had, so I'd like to see your understanding of that situation.
Sure. So, the technical study that we did, we did the exact same analysis for the load and the customers for each individual county as well as the entire region. And there's no question that we would make our economic goals faster as a region, because you have more economy scale in terms of purchasing. There's no question that we would book more surplus revenues and make those renewable energy projects happen faster through those revenues. But, of course, we will make our environmental goals right away because the marketplace is so favorable. So, really, how it affects us is if we go without County of Monterey and without the City of Salinas, and even a couple of the smattering of the cities that have expressed jeopardiation because their county has expressed jeopardiation, we still have 50% of the PG&E customers and 50% of the load that they purchase from PG&E in the tent that will move forward. And that is more than enough to have the appropriate purchasing power to meet really good financial goals and meet our environmental goals. And even if we didn't have that 50% for the region, even if it was just our county and our four cities, we could do it, and we could do it well, because the marketplace is very favorable right now. Those performas are posted on the website, specific to the county and specific to the region, and again, we did independently peer-review that analysis. So, we're very confident that when we go out to bid for actual energy, the early beginning of the summer, that those bids will come out very favorable, and we are going to probably be below PG&E rates with a much greater, higher renewable portfolio because of the nature of the marketplace. But, let's just say, the analysis somehow had a loose screw, and we get those bids back, and, boy, they are like completely out of line, right? We can't do this with the partners in the tent. There is an escape clause in your JPA agreement, and we say, okay, we're not going to move forward. And we've incurred a little bit of costs for actually doing some work up to that point. There's a little bit of liability for the City of Capitola, a little small piece of that, but that's like the worst-case, most extreme scenario. Not one CCE that's formed in the state has failed. They've all been successful, the ones that have been on the ground for more than two years. Well, there's only two of them, that's Marin and Sonoma. But San Mateo County just launched, they went out to bid for their power. They're below PG&E rates. San Francisco, the same thing. They launched about five months ago. They are below PG&E rates. The marketplace is very favorable. We're confident that that will, that will hold for our bid, our RFP in the summer.
Okay. One point I'd also like to clarify is that while the county of Monterey's population is over 400,000, the unincorporated portion of Monterey County, that's the portion that would come along, that wouldn't come along if the county of Monterey ultimately decided not to participate, is just a bit over 100,000. So, our county is actually, I think, population-wise, right on par, maybe even a little bit larger. So, when you look at the list, the folks who've agendized this, which is up on your screen right now, the only one, so if Monterey County didn't participate of the, you know, nearly 700,000 people in this region, 100,000 wouldn't be coming along with Monterey County. It's not going to make or break it.
Okay.
And candidly, the smaller cities in the county of Monterey, because I'm unfortunately having to field all the political phone calls on a daily basis, even if all those that have agendized, as you see on this list, I know that 10 are solid, absolutely solid. The others are, oh, I got more, as you said, Jacque, I got a few more questions, I wonder about this. We're going to go to their council meetings, and we're going to answer their questions, but maybe a few drop off because the county of Monterey may not go forward. That's a possibility. Yet, again, I can stand here and tell you that we have 50% of the customers and the load in the tent happy to move forward with your city and our county.
So, in a way, Alejo's argument doesn't hold, because if the smaller cities are really jumping in, whatever the county is offering in terms of customers, as Jamie just mentioned, it just doesn't hold.
You know, I would never, I would never tell an elected official that they were wrong to their face, especially in a public meeting. But I did try to make the case that it was a perceived problem rather than a real problem.
That's my point.
I tried to do that, and I didn't succeed with Mr. Alejo, but we are trying to make that, that case with Judge Phillips and Supervisor Salinas.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, if I may, to the city council. So, PG&E has been running this option bidding for a long time. I would assume they have a rather large staff to do this. How is Monterey Bay going to be able to do this in such a short period of time?
The procurement piece?
Yes. How's that going to be managed? I'd like to know. I'm sure you've thought of this, I just want to know.
Sure. So, the actual staff of the agency is not very large, maybe 10, maybe 15 at some point, if you actually want to manage your own energy efficiency and renewal projects. But given the history and the best management practices and the lessons we've learned from Sonoma Marin, we would hire a procurement expert, a market expert, as a consultant to assist a very small staff in that procurement process, some, an entity that does, that's all they do, and they, they're like, they're like the ladies and gentlemen that serve on the floor of the stock exchange. You want somebody that's been there, knows the wars, and that's all they do. So, that's exactly what I would anticipate we would do. Your regional committee made a list of, or made a number of recommendations for best management practices to your JPA board, which is a really good foundation for them moving forward, and that's going to be one of them, is to, is to get that expertise in.
Okay. So, I read the one, Richmond did the same thing that you've done, this area's done in terms of a look to see the feasibility, so...
City of Richmond?
Yeah. So, the impression I got is there's groups that do what you just said, and then there's contracts to do that. So, my next question is, what's going to be the demand on these groups, and how many are out there to be available for CCA, CCs?
Great question. It's amazing when you start to actually build a marketplace for expertise, now the experts come. And so far, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a shortage. But I certainly would be anxious to want to move forward, get a really good CEO and start building, you know, getting that expertise in our tent to access. But so far, we've been able to get some great consultants who have helped us with this effort so far. So, I can't, I know that's not a clear answer to your question, but I'm not particularly worried about.
Don't you give me a sense. The industry's developing, I think.
It is. And there's lots of, there's lots of expertise. You know, Community Choice Energy is actually, this is not a new notion, it's been, it's been done in other states. Typically, it's been done in other states in the Midwest and the South to save money and to get the cheapest possible energy they can buy, usually coal, right? But that's not what we want to do here in California, and that's not what the state law says we need to do. So, we're using it as a mechanism to accomplish other goals.
So, my last question is twofold, actually. So, we're all going to be chasing after, I think, the same energy sources. We want green, so we want solar, we want wind, you know, we want something that, maybe thermal, for instance, up north. Are those rates going to start going up, or is development going to be high enough, you sort of talked about that, so that we can keep the rates low? So, if we have a lot of CCs or CCA's going after the same product, seems to me the market rate's going to go up. So, are we actually projecting, or are you projecting significant growth so that those rates still stay low, or?
So, our analysis goes out 10 years. The consultants that conducted the analysis and the independent peer reviewer, who's their competitor, be hired to do that, they went out to 10 years to project what would be happening in the marketplace with the exact, exact thing that you just described.
Scenario.
Scenario, thank you. And there actually is quite a bit of a glut of renewables right now within our state, and actually beyond our state. But our desire would be to economically benefit our state, so that would be our first, I would hope our JPA's first choice is to procure locally, regionally, and within our state. It's a little bit more expensive in California, but that's how we conducted our study, because we wanted to get the best and the closest green that we could. But it also begs the question of the local build-out, that strategic plan to local build-out and local self-sufficiency. You're going to want to build a strategic plan to march toward that self-sufficiency. And I believe, based on the numbers I've seen, that especially if we move forward mostly as a region and we make those financial goals, that we can get there within 10 to 15 years. You know, we might still be alive. That would be awesome. But I would take 20. I mean, that's really a wonderful, a wonderful goal to march toward, and it's not pie in the sky. Sonoma Clean Power, I mentioned, has $50 million surplus in the bank. They are booking almost $2 million a month in surplus. And I asked the CEO not too long ago, what do you do with all that money? And he's looking for, and this is a good example of what you're talking about, how you operate, he's looking for the best credit rating that his agency can get, so he can lower his cost of procurement, because that's what credit ratings do for you, and he wants to float a really, really large bond at some point in the near future where he builds out everything in his county and creates those jobs. That's a great goal. And so, I think that that's a great example for us to go study and say, how'd you do that, and what's going on. Marin's doing a slightly different tactic. They've invested, actually, all the CCs, I already said this, $1 billion in renewables statewide. But Marin has taken a lot of their surplus and they've invested, they have not taken the same tactic as Sonoma, waiting for a large bond. But I really like sort of that approach. We are going to want to be self-sufficient, we're going to want to march toward that, because that keeps our rates fixed.
Is there talk of joint bidding, so between CCA, CCAs jointly bidding on something and dividing up what they get that way?
So, it's been described to me as, at some point, these little fiefdoms are going to have to go away. And we're going to have to band together and actually procure together, which actually small governments do all the time on all kinds of things. So, the answer's yes.
Okay.
And Jamie described a few minutes ago, a coalition of CCEs advocating at the PUC, actually, that's already off the ground. One of the permanent staff positions for our JPA would be a lawyer that does nothing but pay attention at the PUC.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
We have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this topic? Please come up. Thank you for waiting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Councilmembers tonight, my name is Michael Saint, and I'm from Aptos, but I lived in Capitola for several years.
Here's the microphone, Michael.
I lived up in Capitola for several years at Capitola Shores. Great presentation, thank you. Took a lot of my presentation away also, but let me get to some other points. I'm in strong support of the Monterey Bay community power, and I think the two areas I'd like to address, we talked about rates quite a bit. Just for information here, PG&E has raised the rate since 2015, 7%, and then in 2016, another 8.5%, and now they're asking for another 3% for the next couple of years. So, having a large population in these three counties really hasn't stabilized our PG&E rates. When I first put up solar, I was paying 10 cents a kilowatt for my low rate. It's presently 15, which is a 50% increase, not counting the increase coming up at 3%. So, I think the Monterey Bay County power will help stabilize this and actually hopefully reduce it, since we would have control of it locally. The other one, which isn't mentioned, I've got this fact sheet, on the Monterey Bay fact sheet, and they have nine great items here, they're all, I think, really true, and it's going to be an excellent idea. The 10th one, though, has to do with solar. In 2015, the large utility companies went to the PUC and tried to kill rooftop solar, basically. They wanted to get rid of net metering. And an example of this would be Hawaii and Nevada, which they did do that, and the solar industry is pretty much gone in those two states presently. There's a little bit going on. So, Monterey Bay Community Power, since we're control of it, we can select our renewables. And then on the fact sheets, it mentions the part about net metering. I went into the technical study, and let me read this to you. It says, "In addition, all scenarios assume the availability of current solar development incentives, as well as an NBCP-administered net energy program." We can make our own. And then also, it'll further promote the development of local, customer-sided renewable sources. The large utility companies are going the other way. They would like to get rid of it. And so, I strongly support it, and I ask for your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, Bob Edgar. Oh, there's always one negative person in the group. I brought this up a couple months ago, and I'm going to bring it up tonight, too. There goes my service. Thank you for bringing up those PG&E questions, because that's what I'm going to talk about. PG&E is going under tremendous changes. Two days ago, they just announced they're going to have massive layoffs, okay? Now, to me, this whole thing is like an elephant in the room that no one's paying attention to, and that is PG&E. When Diablo Canyon closes within two years from now, I believe it is, that company's going to be a different company. They say, oh, they're obligated to supply, transport all this energy and maintain it. Now, 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 what happens three or four years from now? What shape is PG&E going to be in? Are they, could they just say the keys and say, give you the keys of the towers, gas lines running over, and say, we don't want to do it anymore? Then what? Do we hire them? Is it going to cost money? I can't see PG&E at this point in time, sitting back and saying, we're going to maintain and fix and repair everything that, all the infrastructure, energy infrastructure, that's the gas lines under, the roads that I'm sure they would love to walk away from, and not get reimbursed somehow for this. I can't see them putting all these boots on the ground and delivering through their system energy that someone else is getting paid for. And I think you, I would strongly urge that you not vote until you hear, you get somebody from PG&E, some high-level people here, in front of the council to give their point of view, not only about Monterey Bay energy, but, and they're the people that should be here tonight. I mean, PG&E should be here tonight talking, just not Monterey Bay. Okay, they should be here tonight, because I want to know what's in their portfolio, you know, or their wallet. This is a big entity. This, we're going through tremendous changes. Something tells me PG&E has something up their sleeve, and I think this is, I think people are overlooking that. Get some top people from PG&E in front of you, have them either endorse this, or say, we don't know, or give us your projections. All of these beautiful projections, oh, rates are going to go down and everything. But, what if they back out of the situation? Or if they, they just announced a massive layoff two days ago? What if they just say, it's not ours anymore, go for it? This could happen, and I don't think anyone's talked to PG&E on that level, and I think we should. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Then I'll bring it back to the council, and Mike.
Ed, you want to go first?
Sure. Yeah, I'd love to. I just want to go back a little bit in time. First of all, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the city of Capitola. And when I was mayor, for the whole entire 2016, I was involved in many meetings, many presentations with Jenny, okay? And I've had meetings with Supervisor Salinas, Supervisor Munzer, Supervisor Rebus, and tremendous meetings with Supervisor McPherson. So, I don't want people in Capitol think that we were not informed of this all along. And I've had meetings with the city manager, and Rich was involved in meetings. This is an opportunity, and what I'm really excited about is that we have a seat on this board, and that's where all the apprehension from these other counties and cities is, they wanted more representation on the board. And because we're sitting here as, if it was population-driven, as 10,000 people, we get nothing. But the fact that we're splitting the seat with Scotts Valley, and we have 10,000 people, this is huge, you know? And we're in, and the fact that we won the coin toss, we're in the beginning of this, and we're going to make decisions that are going to benefit this town, this community. When this proposal came through, there's enough solvency for this to work just in Santa Cruz County. The fact that we were able to expand it with San Benito and some of the other, I don't have the list, but it doesn't matter, some of the other smaller places in Monterey County, this is stubbornness on Salinas and stubbornness on Monterey County. And what we have in front of us, what we've already seen work in Sonoma and the other agencies, is this is the opportunity. This has nothing to do with PG&E. This, PG&E does not want this to happen. PG&E may continue to fight to stop this from happening, but for us to get in now, to be able to make this happen, to see the proven results, and what I'm excited about is, is we, this is going to work, and we could be, like Jenny has brought up, we could be reinvesting in our own county with these products. We have waste management in Watsonville, we can get the gas energy working. There are so many components, and the alliance with San Benito County for the possibility of wind power and solar makes this just a perfect thing for us to do. And based on that, I'm going to jump, my friend, the motion maker.
I just have a question first. Did you, did you have any review of the JPA agreement? That was my only, that was my only question.
I've had conversations with the city manager on the JPA agreement, the JP, I don't have any problems with the JPA agreement. Like I said, it benefits the city of Capitola. I mean, our position on this is, I think that we are fortunate to have a, even if it's just a 50% seat on the board at this time, that's large in this, in this representation.
Right. No, that's fine, and I wasn't, I wasn't saying that we weren't involved. I just didn't think that any elected officials had looked at the final JPA agreement, but I'm glad you did.
I did.
That was my only point, is I want to have something brought to us that's been reviewed by some electives also, so that we don't end up, at the end, saying, well, wait a minute, what about that, or what about that, or this person's uncomfortable with it, which they may be, but I'm glad you looked at it.
You know, Stephanie, the fact is, you know, we've got library JPAs, we've got, we just got done doing, you know, with Measure D, we had interactions with the county, and there's a whole lot of dialogue that goes on. And the good thing is, is that because of the JPAs we've already done in the past, there's a lot of things we protected ourselves in this one. And I, and I think, you know, I think the city manager can verify this, I think we came out of this in a pretty stable position, being represented. So, what I want to finish with is, because I just want to move forward on this, is I want to make a motion to adopt staff recommendation, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Mike Termini to be our primary representative and Jacques Petran to be our alternate.
I'll second that.
I was going to motion for you.
Well, we sucked in an alternate. Okay, well.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Jacques.
So, I know it doesn't amount to much, but if Monterey backs out, what's our credit guarantee going to be?
Well, so assuming that doesn't change the startup cost, it would, it would change it from around 140 to 150?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the top-end estimate?
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
Other comments?
I'm very excited about this as well. I know how long Jenny's been working on it, and how long I've been involved in it just peripherally. It makes sense. There is a specific line item on your bill from PG&E that annotates transmission costs. You know what you're paying to get the electricity to your home. We can't get, we can't stumble over the technical aspects of transmission versus generation. The fact that Diablo Canyon is closing is evidence that PG&E would rather not be in the generation business. It is expensive, and it's filled with pitfalls, nuclear power plants in California being the biggest pitfall. It, it goes beyond the fiscal benefits, and it goes beyond any argument we can have about what causes climate change, because that's gone on for the last year and a half in the, in the presidential election. Anything that helps us have cleaner air and be more efficient humans on the planet is beneficial. And this is the greatest strike we can make in that direction. I've read the JPA, I've seen it before now. I, I don't think we can add any words or cobble it, but I take seriously Andy Hartman's comments, and although, after some serious heart-to-heart talks with him today, he has gotten really soft on the union aspects of his comments, and he just wants to make sure that we really focus on local economy, local generation, and local benefits to this, with the money that's generated, and there will be a lot of money generated. This is a no-brainer, and I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah.
When we'll have a roll call, please? Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Turney?
Aye.
Councilmember Petran?
Aye.
Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Highland?
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
I just want to know what the first projects are going to be.
Who said, who said this stuff was hard, Jenny? Come on.
Jenny? Jenny? Four. You have four.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. We have one.
Steve Drayley-Horn, in the ring.
We have one last item that I hope we can talk about just very, very quickly, and, because it's getting late. And what I wanted everybody to do was, and if you're not ready to do this tonight, we can continue this item, but I just wanted everybody to think about what groups they'd like to get to know this year. We have a year, we're going to be, we're in the middle of our contract, we're going to be talking about the groups again next year in 2018. So, if you have a group that you'd like to follow, visit, go on a ride-along, sit in on a client interview, they have to get the permission of the client to do it, because it's confidential, I did that at Senior Legal Services. I'd like us all to pick whatever you're comfortable with, if you want to pick two or three, or four or five. We have the whole year until, in a few months next year, that, you know, if there's some special group that you want, or that you want to visit, let's pick them and get to know them a little bit. So, next year, we'll have more familiarity with them.
I have a suggestion on process, because I think we've all had interaction with some of these groups in one way or another, and why don't we send the city manager some groups that we know of already and we feel comfortable with? And anything that's left over can just be parsed out to council members in groups of three or four groups. I, you know, I have half a dozen here right away that I, I deal with on a weekly basis, and I'm sure Kristen does as well, and the rest of us do. So, how about that? We shoot names to the city manager.
We'll put the rest in the hat and pick.
The rest, we put in the hat and pick, it's all good, they're all wonderful people to interact with.
You're saying, take the ones out that we intimately know and focus on the ones.
I, you know, I have half a dozen here right away that I, I deal with on a weekly basis, and I'm sure Kristen does as well, and the rest of us do. So, how about that? We shoot names to the city manager?
We'll put the rest in the hat and pick.
The rest, we put in the hat and pick, it's, it's all good, they're all wonderful people to interact with.
You're saying, take the ones out that we intimately know and focus on the ones that-
Let the, let the city manager know which ones we know intimately, and that, that takes, that cuts this list down dramatically.
Okay.
And then we can be given those-
Getting those other ones up and go with-
That we have to do some, you know, serious digging.
I kind of thought that's what we were going to do, and I think that's a great idea. It's a great way to proceed.
That's great. Okay, but we'll do it. Why don't you get it to him by the end of next week? Jacque?
I have no problem with that. But I do know that County of Santa Cruz and the City of Santa Cruz have been moving forward on a way to allocate funding, and I believe, Jamie, that you've been involved in that discussion. So, I think it's about time that we bring that to the city council here, so that we can understand the latest developments and what is being planned, if there are plans, and how that might affect, if we choose to go along with it, how that might affect us.
I could speak to that briefly, if you'd like.
We don't have to do it now, but, you know, something a little more-
I believe they just closed the initial RFP for-
Yeah, no, I know about the RFPs, but I think they're going to ask for other communities